Coming out of the executive session. There'll be everybody on what we did in the executive session tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight for the Darlington City Council meeting for February the 2nd, 2021. Councilwoman, Mrs. Freed, will you say the prayer for us, please?
Yes. With all hearts and minds clear, let us pray. Father God, I come to you tonight with a humble heart, and I want to thank you for all of the blessings of our allowing this meeting tonight. I pray that you will fill our hearts, our minds, and our souls with a spirit of unity that will transform all our efforts into a great and prosperous Darlington. I pray that you will guide our deliberation to be in your will and multiply our gains as only you can. Father, I pray that you will keep us all safe and healthy during this pandemic. We pray for the doctors, the nurses, the first responders, and dear Lord, I pray that you will grant peace and comfort to the many families that have lost loved ones during this pandemic. Bless this meeting tonight, all those present and all those whom our decisions will affect. I ask these blessings in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do I say the pledge of allegiance? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve approval of amendments for the city council meeting from 1/5/21?
I'll second.
Mr. Nettles?
Aye.
Mrs. Freed? Secretary?
Aye.
Questions approved. Do I have a motion to approve a meeting, meeting agenda for tonight?
I make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda for Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 city council meeting.
I'll second.
Nettles? Mr. Millian? Mr. Backus? Thank you. Questions carried. All right, report of standing committees, the Darlington Downtown Revitalization Association, Mrs. Lisa Bobb.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The D D R A is collaborating with Joe's Grill for its annual chili championship and car show on Saturday, March 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Cook teams will buy for the best, the title of best chili in town, and the proceeds will go towards the fire department. Tasting risk bands can be purchased that morning at Joe's Grill for $5, and the people will choose to change them. We'll be outside, so people can socially distance as appropriate. The D D R A will also present its 2020 Member of the Year Award during the Chamber's Annual Banquet on March 18th. Members will be receiving a survey in the mail soon to make their selection for the person or business that has impacted the economic climate in Darlington the most in 2020. As members of the city council, you're also eligible to vote on behalf of the city. We are also moving forward to invite teams to participate in our annual D D R A golf tournament on Wednesday, April 14th, at Darlington Country Club. The four-man captain choice tournament includes delicious lunch, beverages, and a wonderful afternoon of golf. Thank you to Carolina Bank, Darlington Raceway, Nationwide Insurance, Fitness World Gym, and M P D Electric for their support that makes this event possible. We're still looking for golf teams, pool sponsors, and goodie bag donations for this fun day on the golf course. We will also be continuing our monthly member breakfasts at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 25th, at Taki's Diner. We do these every month on the fourth Thursday of the month. The meals are at no charge for D D R A members and a small $5 fee to go towards the meal for all others. The events allow our businesses to build connections and strengthen our local economy. In the meantime, we continue to promote Darlington and its businesses on social media and through our news alert system each week. Our alerts reach more than 2,700 people. We continually update our website, buildupdarlington.org, where individuals can submit information or sign up to receive these alerts. D D R A membership is open to businesses, individuals, civic groups, and churches. Members can get, anyone who's interested in becoming a member can give us a call or send us an email, info@buildupdarlington.org, and we'll feature their news, employee recognitions, sales, new products, special hours, and other events that are going on with people interested in Darlington, as well as TV stations, radio stations, and newspapers through our news alert system. Any questions?
Could I get a digital copy of this? And thank you so much. This is wonderful.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The Greater Chamber of, Darlington Chamber of Commerce, this Carla here.
Hi. Good evening. Mayor, manager, council. Some of you may not know me. My name's Carla Elvington, and I'm pleased to advise you that I was most recently appointed as the president at the Greater Darlington Chamber of Commerce for Lamar and Society Health. The Chamber is hosting our very next event this Thursday from 5:30 until 7:00 at the Chamber, which kicks off our Business After Hours events for 2021, and we would love for you all to attend. After that, our next event will be the annual membership meeting, which will be held at the grand old post office. Tickets are $25. We encourage everybody to attend that as well. If you don't, you will surely miss out on a good time.
What day is that?
That is March 18th at 6:00 p.m. And last but not least, we're planning a spectacular Freedom Fest this year that'll be held downtown Darlington, so I encourage you to mark your calendars for that as well.
What's the date?
July 3rd, and that will begin tentatively right now, 6:00 p.m. Any questions? Well, I thank you all for your time. Please call the Chamber if I can be of any assistance to you whatsoever.
You're available one day, as you said?
Tuesday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. I'm in the office.
Good luck.
I look forward to seeing you all and speaking with you again on Thursday evening. Thank you kindly.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Informational question along those lines. We could potentially talk about having an executive session or work session in the coming weeks. Maybe we should tag along the hospitality fund and where we are going to be donating to in the coming fiscal year. I know our revenues have been down dramatically, so we need to get a good idea of where we spent last year, you know, for our donations to different causes, and if we need to curtail those potentially for the coming fiscal year, and maybe put that as a second topic for that meeting.
All right. Lisa, was there any emails or anything coming in from Citizens Wish until here before council?
Yes, Mayor, we did receive one written letter from Mr. Lincoln Privet Senior. He has referred to this as praise report and suggestions. To whom it may concern, I've noticed a change for the better in regards to personnel and what I see on a daily basis with my eyes. While there still are too many potholes, I witness newly paved streets, problem trees being removed, and sidewalks being repaired. With this being said, I want to suggest three or four items that can be easily addressed. There are five potholes on Darlington Avenue between Edwards Avenue and Darben Street. Painting this small stretch of roadway would make a big difference. Also, there are two drains at intersections that are causing damage to vehicles due to pavement on top of pavement, thus causing the drains to be four to six inches deep. Only notice these deep drains if there's a car at the intersection while you're making your turn. These intersections are located at Liberty and Orange, as well as at East Hampton and Grove Street. The final item is the litter beside the road going down Reservoir Street toward the bridge and the city limits sign. Thank you for all you have done and are continuing to do.
Unfinished business. Second reading ordinance 2021-01, transfer ownership of Fountain Hewitt Streets to Darlington County.
I'd like the motion to approve. First reading ordinance 2021-02, annexation of Young slash Wyndham Streets.
This is transfer ownership of Fountain Hewitt Streets.
I apologize, I was one down. I guess I missed it. I'd like to motion to approve the second reading ordinance 2021-01, transfer ownership of Fountain slash Hewitt Street to Darlington County.
I'll second that one.
Mr. Millian? Mrs. Freed? Mr. Backus? Mr. Seeger?
Aye.
Motion carries. Transfer. New business, first reading ordinance 2021-02, annexation of Young slash Wyndham Streets.
Mr. Mayor, this is the properties that have been, recently been built up. They've added some new houses in that area. So the request is that we have first reading on the annexation recently within the last six months. We voted to accept the water sewer lines when they were completed, and I understand that they're further along in the construction process now that they're asking for the annexation.
Part of the annexation is?
They don't have addresses yet, so we're just had to put a corner of Young and Wyndham Streets.
So, okay, I thought, is there others in San Francisco? Are they, are the, I mean, streets in this area that's inside the city?
This is the four parcels. This house right here, these people are in the city limits over here.
Elaine, we would not be annexing the streets, we would be annexing the property.
Yeah, we're just annexing these properties. Now, they've got a house built on three of them so far. We're working on it.
You've got an 8A pointing at a lot there.
That's the lot, but we're talking about 8A.
And then 8B will be the other one.
8B is going to be the next item on the agenda.
How many actual lots funding a Wyndham Street? Is it that one lot at the corner of Wyndham and Young?
It's three lots facing Wyndham and one facing Young Street.
Oh, okay. So it's these three lots right here?
Yes, those three, and then that one there.
Right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we're looking to annex all?
So now, all four at one time.
Okay.
Just curious, why does it say transfer ownership of Fountain Hewitt Streets? That's not what it is.
Excuse me?
No, I'm sorry. I keep on switching between these two.
They were, they were.
I'm sorry.
Just be, could you not be asking about all the sand extension and the ton out and what it took? So are they, are they?
They are contiguous.
To what?
To the city.
To what? That's what I'm trying to say, to Main Street?
This house and this house. These houses right here are in the city.
And that's what I was asking, that's why I was asking the first time. What was in, what else is in there?
This is in the city right here, and these things are probably in the city.
Okay, all right.
Right now, Lisa, the lot to the right of 8A is there on Main Street, those lots are already in the city grid.
The two that are facing North Main are, and the ones between Wyndham and Bird Avenue are, are in the city limits. And that is how they are contiguous. And obviously, it is a, it's an advantage to us to have the builder annex all four lots at one time, rather than go through four separate property owners.
So these are, these are empty lots to look to build?
Well, they are already building. They're built, they've got three houses in construction, and one of them is, is right now, it's a lot.
Is this the ones that, that?
We annexed the sewer line, or we agreed to take the four sewer lines?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
So now we're just looking to annex it?
Yes.
How about, how about?
All right, I'd like the motion to approve first reading ordinance 2021-02, annexation of Young Wyndham Street lots.
Nettles?
Aye. Let those minutes show we're getting the lots and not the streets.
Yes. Mrs. Backus? Seeger?
Aye. You heard the word lots.
So to confirm, it has been passed in the first reading ordinance 2021-02, annexation, adding the words lots, home, young, and four lots, four lots on Young and Wyndham Streets.
The text of the ordinance specifies what's in the deed of those, and those tax map notes as well, just to let you know.
All right. Thank you. All right, new business, annexation request from Beth Lambert.
She's, I'll give you some background while we want her to come in. She had called the last few months asking about annexing 111 Laurel Avenue because she's been having problems with a septic tank and sewage coming into her house. She sits in a low area, and so the, she would get the benefit of having sewer, sewage, and we'd have the benefit of her coming in. Only issue that we've had is the taffy, $1,600 of cost is $29,425 plus the engineering design and survey, which is around $35,000 to do that. That's when, Ms. Lambert asked to come before you. I thought I'd put it on the agenda, but she wanted the opportunity to appear before you tonight and ask before you to annex the property.
And, and on your map there, you see 8B, that is her house.
Thank you for coming to that, Ms. Freed.
I'm not going there, so do I just?
You just go and talk?
Yes. I just thought we were coming to listen. So anyway, we did have a good bit of trouble with our septic tank at times with just, I mean, I know it's somebody's fault, but we are here to ask if we can join the city in city sewage to try and correct that problem. I know it's an expensive problem, I mean, expense on your side, but.
And we, we think, we think other neighbors would probably join in, you know, and it could be extra revenue for the city with cities, with city sewage, and also with the trash pickup, too, and we really would like to be able to join.
Freed, how many houses do we have in between them and the sewer line?
It ends at the corner of Laurel.
Sir?
The sewer line ends right at Laurel, right at the end.
On Laurel? Oh, you said it into Laurel?
Yeah, and before Laurel, sorry.
Manhole's in front of Roger Langley's old house.
I don't know where that is. Give me like Bird Street.
And the curve, and the curve.
The curve where Bird's closest to?
Yeah. You got the house, you got Bird Avenue, you got the house on the corner, the house right behind that is where Roger Langley used to live at, the manhole's there. So there's one house in between where the sewer stops and their house.
So the sewer line goes halfway up Bird Avenue. Is that correct?
It goes all the way down Bird, because it transitions into Laurel and Bird.
Some of Young Street.
So it goes all the way to where Young and Laurel meet?
Yeah. Now, to Little Williams' house is hooked up to the city. She, she got annexed in, what, a year or two ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
And she's on what street? The person you're talking about is on what street?
Young Street.
Oh, Young?
Because it's the corner of Young and Laurel.
Yes, that's right.
And she is, she is actually, you know, if you're looking out our front door, her house is right across the street.
Oh, gotcha. So now I understand what you're saying.
Separating you and the sewer.
There's one house.
One house separating you and the sewer. And that is $39,000 to go one house down.
It runs 30, it's 134 foot.
$39,000 for us to run?
No. To run Laurel Street.
To run the whole street or just that section of it?
Run, the figure is to run down Laurel.
Is that all the way to the end?
Yeah.
Where Anderson?
One, two, three, four, five. So you catch five houses potentially.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Lisa, are you in here?
Yes.
Previously, whenever we were talking about annexation, and one of the things that we discussed was annexing the back of the country club and a payoff amount that could tell us the profitability of adding sewer to those houses, and it was a payoff of seven to 11 years. Can you give me the payoff for just running Laurel Street on these houses, or give us that next week?
Yeah, I can get it to you next week.
Okay.
I didn't realize it went all the way, all the way to Anderson.
Yeah, so.
It's to be good.
Would that be able to catch both sides of the street?
It's going to be on their side of the street. We're standing off the street so we don't dare to streak up.
Well, we have to run another line on the other side of the street?
Either that or they'd have to, you know, bore across each one.
Do we have the capability in-house to bore?
No, not, not that big a problem.
How much does it cost to bore?
I don't have any idea.
Can you?
I can get the numbers for that once off.
So yeah, get the numbers for that, and then how much it costs to bore, if you can get that, Ms. Lisa?
Mm-hmm.
And then figure out if it costs more to bore each time, or if we should run two fights on each side of the road. Right?
Either run down the center of the road, just that pre-built road.
We can't just cut like we do every other street as long as the neighbors are fine and don't yell too much.
You've got to have the center of the street, you just have to pre-bore.
Okay. Um, I'm interested in the idea. I want to annex the whole house, any house that touches our perimeter. My perspective, I can't pay $39,000 for one house. I mean, y'all have to understand that. It doesn't, from a financial standpoint, it only adds cost, and there's no payoff for us. It's just an extra liability. But maybe we can get some of your neighbors, and she'll get the number to say just this street is something that's profitable for y'all. It probably will be, from a long-term perspective, from the city's perspective, with my knowledge of the previous times in other neighborhoods.
If we, if you did it, would you have to take it all the way to Anderson?
That'll be another question. I was going to ask that. So Lisa, please, I guess, get with our other departments to get that answer. How much would it cost to go just to their house?
Here's my other question. You already have county water, correct? Okay. So, Mr. Kinsale, approximately what would their, they would be charged for just sewer?
Yeah, yeah, they would just pay sewer.
And street.
And about what would that run?
Based on their water bill, it's, sewer base would be based off their, we would get the meter read from the county.
Right.
And their sewer charges would be based off their water bill.
So, again, I would suggest while we're working on this, maybe you can talk to your neighbors and say, you know, you can.
I talked to two, one on one side.
Pick up trash service for it, you know. Again, we're all at a point trying to look at, and everybody's tight on money, but at the same time, you know, it'd be beneficial to them when they ever sold the houses and less worry of having to worry about anything with sewer. But also, you know, it would be, it wouldn't be a significant charge to be able to be a part of the city, and then also then they would help you with your fire rating, also their correctness.
They're already in the fire district, so it's not really going to change their tax situation that much.
So basically, it'd just be a difference.
That changes it dramatically and keeps it up.
For the city to step up, take that responsibility.
Let me ask this, if we were able to do it, would we need, would we be on city water there, too?
No, sir.
You have to keep county water, we can't take anybody else's.
Not, not, we would be, we would be against the law to do so.
Okay, I got you. We have approximately 100 accounts to.
To your advantage right now.
County water, city sewer. Okay. So, and then they would.
For real, that's.
If I'm not incorrect, I think if my water bill is $30, my sewer bill is usually about $30, is a, about the right, same thing, so whatever your water bill, they would pretty would be, and the city's usually about that way. Then if I have a water bill that like is $30, and my sewer bill part is $30, that's about usually what it's going to be.
From the standpoint of utilizing that time, I would make a motion that we approve first reading if that's the status of things, and then that way we can get our information together, and when we come back in March, we'll know whether we financially afford to approve second reading.
That would speed things up, yes.
Okay, and so we could go to our neighbors and ask them?
Yes.
And they could contact somebody?
They can contact me.
If they have the application, just like we did or whatnot?
Yep.
Okay.
And Lisa, if you can get her email address, maybe you can get her a list, and, and maybe something that she could get somebody to sign with like their name, their address, and their email address, and then we can help feed this whole process up.
If they don't be interested, they would be, they would be committed, you know?
Yeah, would you mind doing that? That would help us coordinate who's interested.
You're asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I'd be glad to.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know the neighbors, so I could just.
You're our best asset.
You just need name, address, and an email address?
Exactly.
And maybe a phone number?
Yeah.
No, I'd be glad to get that.
Well, you're our best asset and make it possible, so thank you.
I'd be glad to help.
Did I get a second?
I have a second now.
All in favor, Mr. Nettles?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Backus?
Let's tack this with the ordinance number since we don't have it on the agenda. 2021-03.
2021-03.
Okay, 03.
Okay, so motion is carried for annexation request.
First reading.
First reading, Beth Lambert, 2021-03.
Yeah, we would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Unless you want to sit here for the rest? Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, new business, paving the fire department parking lot. Bid approval?
I can take that. You've seen how bad the parking lot looks in the fire department is?
I apologize, I was trying to get.
We've had two bids for the paving business. One is for the company that's actually doing the work now, Ari Goodson Construction, is $15,100. The second bid was $28,000. I did not include it in there because it was so high. We do have, we do have the money in the budget, listed in the budget under 58388 paving and current other services. So I recommend once that they finish work over there, that they're going to do that work to finish paving up the fire department. Let me add as a corollary, too, that within the next six months, we're going to, we need to begin planning to move into another fire department. We've had a number of cracks in the foundation with the construction work going on in Orange and Well Street, and so I don't think long-term we're going to be able to stay in that building. We are working on an exit strategy, and we'll discuss possibly with council approval in a future executive session next, next month or so. We are, we're working on a plan for that, but we, we may be in there for a while until we get out of it.
From my talking with them, I understand the concerns, and it sounds, very worse. Can we get a potential structural engineer to go in there?
He's coming Monday.
Is the, is that parking lot, that, that a repair, if we're going to be moved shortly?
Well, shortly, it could be several years before we move, sir, because we have to, I'd rather come to that executive session.
And if, even if they, for to decide tomorrow to build, it would take a year to get them out of there. Parking lot is full of spider webs, it's just, I mean, it's that big chunks. We asked them to give us a bid while they were there. The other bid was actually $20,000, the other $8,000 was, was due in the back of parking lot, so the two bids went from $15,000 to $20,000, but that was removing all the asphalt there, double-laying it back, but two layers. And then again, if, if our department does move out or alter, you know, or tear it down, it'll still be usable for something else, and so it'll be in good shape.
So there were multiple bids and Goodson just won, is that what?
They were a little bigger, yes.
Okay. I'm related to them in a way, I believe, so don't I have to say? I mean, I am, right?
If you feel like you're, it's necessary, then you can.
It's my mother's.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah.
You just have to write it down for the minutes as well.
Right?
I'll put it up on the Q. I'll get it.
Okay. And if, if, even if they, for to decide tomorrow to build, it would take a year to get them out of there. Parking lot is full of spider webs, it's just, I mean, it's that big chunks. Um, we asked them to give us a bid while they were there. Uh, the other bid was actually twenty thousand, the other eight thousand was, was due in the back of parking lot, so the two bids went from fifteen thousand to twenty thousand, but that was removing, um, all the asphalt there, double-laying it back, but two layers, um. And then again, if, uh, if the fire department does move out or call, or, or tear it building down, it'll still be usable for someone else, and so it'll be in good shape.
Um, so there were multiple bids and Goodson just won, is that what?
They were a little better, yes.
Okay. I'm related to them in a way, I believe, so don't I have to say? I mean, I am, right?
Uh.
If you feel like you're nece- it's necessary, then you can.
It's my mother's.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, yeah.
You just have to write it down for the minutes as well.
Right?
I'll put it on the queue, I'll get it. Okay, we have a motion to approve the, uh, paving of the further park, parking lot, bid approval for Goodson Construction. I'll move it. Remember second?
Second.
Nettles? Mr. Beckus? Seaggers?
Aye.
Uh, but it be noted that, uh, Mr. Bryant, uh, refrains from quoting on this conflict of interest. Uh, Mr. Billy made the motion and Mrs. uh, Reed made the second. Thank you. Okay, uh, new business housing, uh, demolition list approval?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Um, so we have, we still have several, um, houses on the demolition list from the twenty, from the last, uh, approval. But I wanted to add, um, six other houses, two are commercial properties, uh, it's the old, um, auto repair on South Main Street. The, um, we're blacking in on that, and the old laundromat, um, adding that.
What about the auto repair?
The, um, Hunter Gould, I think owns it now, on the right, yes, ma'am.
Is that the one with the cactuses and stuff upon it?
Yes, sir. And then the, um, old laundromat that, um, they keep acting like they're going to do something with it, and all they've done is take the roof off so it looks even worse. And then the other are grossly dilapidated houses. Um, one on the corner of Tallulah and Syracuse, one of them is on, um, Darlington, the, um, roof is falling in, um, on those. So, um, we'd just like to add those, um, six houses or structures, um, to the demolition.
There's Tallulah Street?
Tallulah and Syracuse.
Can we get an update of the list? Can we get an update of the list?
In front of the white apartment, right side.
You should have one in your package. At the top, this carryover from the last. This is proposed, ma'am.
Yeah, no, just.
Um, um, Councilman, um, Gardner asked if he could get an update of the list and I was just telling him that it was in the, kind, the package.
Sir, one last question, um, can we publicize this list? I don't know the timeline of these new ads, but there is something that you're gonna be doing after our council meeting tonight. I'd love to have some lag of a week, two weeks, I don't know. I don't think we legally have to have any lag. Well, but I would love to lag at least one week, uh, A, publicize on all of our social media platforms the city owns, and B, get it to her historic society, um, because he has had an expressed interest in a previous one. I know there is publicly mandated laws that we have to follow. I'm trying to go above and beyond, Lisa. You have some help there?
Uh, I've already sent the list to Mr. Gandy.
Then I also sent him a list, so he has it twice.
He showed that he was also sending a list for the house that was torn down and broken.
That's, that's one.
And then so, just so you guys kind of know what I do, um, so I have the list and then I go around and I rank them, like what's worse and what's the best. And once I actually rank it and decide that it's gonna be on the schedule the next five, um, I actually send a letter to, um, the property owners to let them know, you are scheduled for demolition, this house is coming down, or this structure is coming down, so that, um, they are aware that, um, we can, um, if you so wanna publicize it on social media, I can do that as well.
I mean, I don't think that'll harm anything and there may be some, um, investor that has capital to turn these things around that we don't know about and has invested interest. Just trying to maintain, I guess, um.
That's what council would like to be able to do, I can do that for sure.
Once these are approved, you're not, or he's not going out next week to turn them anyway, right?
No, it's not like, you know, no, I'm not going to, but.
There may be lists have to get known about.
Once it gets on the schedule, if you guys would like for me to put it on social media, kind of what's coming up next, we can do that for sure.
Yeah, once these lists get, um, authenticated through council, all your routes, then let's get that on the social media.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's, what's, um, on the list for next, I mean, what timeframe and when, it's been since, what, November since we're calling it now?
Um, it has, and, um, so when ever the, um, machine is available and weather cooperates, um, we had some catch basins that needed to be rebuilt and some stormwater issues that were, you know, the, um, machine was being used. So when the machine's available and, um, weather allows us to. Um, unfortunately, some of these houses are in kind of bottoms, so once it does get wet, it takes a long time for it to dry out. So, you know, it gets saturated and then, you know, a day or two of the, you know, if not raining, dries out a little bit, but not enough for that heavy machine, and we don't wanna bog that down, and then it rains again. So kind of right now is not a good season for it, um, because of all of the precipitation that we've been receiving. But once it dries out, um, we're gonna get back on it.
What's, what's on the next, what's on the list next?
Um, so it's at the bottom, if you look at the bottom of the list, um, it said, it has the next four, four, um, four oh five Second Street, four oh nine First Street, five oh two Washington Street, and two eighteen Edward Street, um, are the next four that are scheduled to.
Can I find, that was my other question, is the five oh two Washington Street at the bottom, is that a different five oh two Washington Streets at the top?
Um, no, so the ones that are at the top are the carryover of the current list. The middle section is what's proposed, and so the bottom four, is, all of them are gonna be on that top list because that's just what's been scheduled.
I'm saying you got five, five oh two here and five oh two here, so.
Right, 'cause five oh two's the schedule and at the bottom, and five oh two is just all of the properties that are currently approved. So they're gonna be, all four of those should be on there. And if they're not, that's, yeah, all of them are on there.
So, in essence, what we're acting on is that second group.
That middle.
That's twenty twenty-one.
Yes, sir, right. Any other questions?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Our motion to approve the revised, um, demolition list.
Nettles?
Approved.
Billy? Beckus? Who, who can have the second?
I have it.
Okay, Mrs. Reed? Frank? Seaggers, thank you.
Hi.
Any motion carries? Thank you, uh, Shil.
Yes, sir.
Right, uh, LED outdoor light update, South Main Street?
I can take that, uh.
Gordon?
We, uh, Lisa and I had a conference call with Duke Energy last week. Um, we've come to an agreement to test some lights out on South Main Street at four thousand lumens. They'll be LED lights. We're supposed to meet with them tomorrow, uh, sometime late in the afternoon, and we're gonna pick out two or four lights to put up, see what they look like, so they should be up in the next two weeks or so. Then we'll, uh, wait for any comments to come back. Everything looks good, then we'll go ahead and shoot that entire area with, uh, four thousand lumen lights. We had a great, probably an hour, hour and a half discussion, uh, through Zoom, about what type of lumens we'd have, what type of light coverage it would give. Um, the Duke folks, uh, were saying that some of the things that we have in our ordinance, they don't have in their catalog at work. So, we're gonna be working with them. We think we came to an understanding, uh, through a, a good amount of conversation of what that looks like, but we wanted to go ahead and test it first instead of putting everything out all at once. So, we'll meet tomorrow, we'll put in, uh, where it's gonna be on South Main Street, then we'll let everybody know through texting and social media to give any comments on what it looks like. If it looks too bright, it's not bright enough and so on, so we'll have that up before the next council meeting.
And does it, does it cost us to change the lights or they're charged?
No, it does not. No, we, we're, we're charged the same amount regardless of whether it's LEDs or the, uh, sodium vapor lights.
So if we like those lights, then they could actually get through and make all the lights in the whole city the same?
If you, if that's the desire of, of council, yes, uh, yes, sir, but we were specifically talking about the area in South Main where it's so dark, and we've had, uh, three pedestrian deaths, I believe, in the last five years. Um, it is especially dangerous for the addition of Walmart since twenty sixteen. Um, and folks want to cross to the Circle B in different places and, uh, it's just been, it's been a problem for a while. So we, this is the way we can address it to make things safer for folks walking and driving.
Yeah, that was my question, is if it's, if it's, if it's, uh, agreed upon on that area, then we could also ask if it's agreed upon amongst everybody before you change the whole town. It would be any cost to the city to update everything.
Uh, no, it would not, but the, the issue, the issue you're gonna run in with them, them is, uh, that's mostly a commercial area, there's some residences, but if you go into residential areas.
Yeah, I'm just saying commercially.
My go commercial is different.
Yeah.
And if our ordinance is needing to be changed to set, you know, the style of lighting that they have, then we obviously need to update that, um.
We're, we're, we're gonna meet again af- uh, we, 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 once we're on the conference call, we, we're gonna move on to something else, and we're, are gonna work with them to update the ordinance. Um, they want to have input as to what that looks like, but we feel like too, since they're such a large enough company, that they should be able to provide, uh, lighting that's safe, that shields completely down. That was one of the things we kept talking about over and over again on the conference call, was we don't want lighting that shields up. It's gonna go into the night sky, we want it to be down on the ground so that everybody can see.
Showing you what you need to look at.
Right. I'm just, um, okay. This week, of course, I had one of my, uh, and you all know who, who he is, uh, stopped me to complain about lighting on Pearl Street. So are these lights that will shine down, not up? Is that, is, are they on Pearl Street?
That old lady I had, if he had those lights over there.
No, I'm, I'm asking what's happening now, that, because the complaint is now.
We're talking just specifically right now about the issue with pedestrian traffic on South Main, but as Mayor Boyd just said, we can put it in other commercial areas if you like what it looks like. That's what we're gonna put it up.
Right.
Those work well, and, and they're shining down, and they're bright, and they're safe.
That, yeah.
We could go and, and do that to the, the whole town.
So, I'm, I'm just wondering, I, I was just trying to determine what it is. I didn't think, nobody else is complaining, but I just wanted, whatever we've got on Pearl Street, this is, is, he was telling me we did something against the law.
Those lights.
Which I don't, you know, believe, but I'm just, I said, since we're talking about it, let me know what's on Pearl Street.
Shielded by the subway, is that what?
Seaway, and.
There's several, uh, several properties on Pearl Street that don't have shielded lighting.
That don't have filter.
Shielded, so it's pulling down.
Oh, okay.
And on the property.
That's what's going on, okay.
But we're talking about lighting that Duke Energy provides for us, not so much what commercial businesses provide for the parking lots and so on.
Okay.
But that's what our ordinance.
Well, we're gonna discuss that, I, I'm hoping they'd do two or four, I don't, I want one on each side of the road.
Yeah.
To see how far it goes across the road.
Yeah, we, we, we're just, we're gonna, we're gonna drive it and look and see and, uh.
We said you wanna do that tomorrow, you said?
Yeah, I just don't, I'm waiting on a specific time because they called it till late Saturday, and I thought if I had meetings, must be there tomorrow, so it has to be late.
Are you dealing with many of this?
Excuse me?
Are you dealing with many of this?
Uh, no, uh, Tom, Tom Land.
Okay. Um, lastly, we had also mentioned, I think Elena mentioned the street, uh, but I had mentioned the corner of, help me, John Seaggers, is it, uh, Wyandotte and Shoshone? At the bottom of the hill?
Wyandotte and Rappahoe.
At the corner of Wyandotte and the Rappahoe, um, around that curve is the darkest place and all, one of the darkest places in town. And it's a very dangerous area, um, so one light will probably handle that area, maybe two, but definitely one. And then right there at the playground, at, um, the road to Judge Grill.
To the right.
In between Judge Grill and.
West Street.
There needs to be at least maybe one right there.
I think they had asked for small lighting on Richardson Street also.
Where's Richardson?
Going into the apartments off the screen.
It's Rich, Richmond.
Richmond?
Richmond.
Yeah.
So.
Road that we paved.
On the left hand side, like Spring Mark?
Yeah, I'm sure on this.
Yeah, I'm sure, we did Spring Mark.
That strip right there doesn't have any lights.
I was, I was told that the street that we paved was going.
Would you run that road? Um, Alex, get us an opinion?
I looked at the country club, there's actually a light in that curve, and I don't know if it's our or not, but there is a light in that curve.
Well, I've gone through there my whole life, and if it's there, it's darker, then we need one more somewhere. Do you agree?
It gets dark.
Yeah, that, that light might be like the one on Millen Street that's behind mine. It's so dark, it's that one little block between Jefferson and, and Tallulah. If the light stays on, it's fine, but it does not stay off.
That's the deal.
That's, that's around the corner for me, I've got a.
Yeah.
Pole number, I'm gonna give Lisa the night so they can check that.
Yeah, they can see something other if you just get the pole number, they'll come fix it.
They really will, I'm just.
I don't have a, they've been that, I mean, you know, this ain't the first time I'm talking about that, but I'm gonna do it again, I, each time, I, I put it in.
I tell you, everybody's a thing on Robbie Kilgore, William Jackson, and other gentleman, William, um, John Wallace, they went around this whole town, got all these pole numbers, and went over to Duke and turned them in, and during that, they didn't get them off it.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, any, uh, questions, uh, or information from the department here? I've got a feeling.
Yes, item number two under the Water Department, um, I'm not sure where we are on that. Is that just previous information or is something new going on down there on East Grove Street?
They're working this just like before the weather was killing them. They're trying, they, all they like is the road.
It just says major sewage on East Grove Street, I didn't know whether that was something new or whether that was.
A carryover, that's carryover on the front. That's just front.
So for an update on the project, we're just waiting for it to dry off and then they're repairing it?
They fixed the road.
And then we're done?
Yeah. Cleaned we off with a bypass now?
Yeah, but that's.
So we're prepared.
Okay. All the, all the bikes are down, the machines are on, and what I can see looks like they're just waiting to pave.
They're trying to keep putting rock in and packing them down, trying to get it drying up to pace.
I inquired to, um, a few of the administration about fixing our water leaks in our brand new roads. Um, we are waiting on our truck getting its tags, did we get that situated? This Glory Prison or Alex?
About the, the hot box.
That's right.
We got everything they can carry up, we're just waiting on, um, Reed Davis, he's gonna come to do training with us, because we haven't done any official training on him.
Okay.
Come do all of our training, I'm waiting on him to give me a training deck now. He could probably see two or three days with us.
This is gonna weather. Any trouble? I said it's dry weather.
Yeah, might have dry weather too.
Uh, my question on that, will we be available, uh, uh, able to, uh, like the corner, for example, of, um, Hampton and Main, we turn up in a shop and IGA there, sections like that that are real rough, that are, are, are our roads, DOT roads, are we, will we have the ability to patch and touch up some of the state boots without, um, total problem?
That's terrible.
We got to do Jeff, right, and if we start patching their road, then they, they'll likely get it to us.
Yep.
They've got the machine, they, they bought a hot box, our hot box is actually off of the DOT's peg. Only thing that we got that they don't is the infrared unit that we have to be able to patch around potholes and stuff, I mean, around, um, manholes and stuff. They got the same exact unit sitting down at the county shop that we got.
My understanding is for my time, I asked the same exact question, was as long as we ask real nice beforehand, if it'd be okay, we're good to go.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I mean, I know it's theirs, but I'd like to see them do it or Scors do it or somebody do it correctly and correct some roads that, that gives the perspec- perception of, to the city residents that they're out there, they're not ours, but then at least that they see that we're trying to make things better, like.
I had the same question with Medford. Now, have you had any further conversations on that subject about Medford?
Um, I talked to Treasure about it and, and Liz LaMcClellan, and, um,
These are DOT?
It's on the list to be resurfaced. I don't know when, um, I mean, they, he said their list, they got a list that's like a one year, five year, ten year. So he said, I mean, he doesn't know when it's gonna fall, it's, to them, it's not a major street. I mean, it's in bad shape, but it's not a major street. It does have a lot of traffic, but I think they're looking at some of the bigger streets first.
Could somebody correct me if I'm wrong, am I too rude to ask the question, um, if DOT would provide us with a list of streets the city has done since they've paved for us in the last five years? Is that a rude question?
I don't think so, I don't think so either.
Anybody else see that as rude? Could you ask that question to them?
Do you want a list of the streets that they've paved in the city in the last five years?
Yes, sir.
I'll call Treasure tomorrow and see if I can get it.
Thank you.
And I also see, I know they've got a few more streets that are supposed to be coming up, um, I think in the next year, I'll find out what those streets are. I think you said, uh.
Pearl, Pearl Street's on the docks to be, to be bided on in March, so then they have, once they bid on it, they have like up to eighteen months to pay that the contractor does. Uh, fifth to bypass, my understanding, my understanding from by, by those out to Pizza Hut is on the bid, you know, on the docks can be paid real soon also. Uh, that's only two, other two that I know.
You said the road in front of Pizza Hut, where?
To Pizza Hut, the bypass.
Okay. Yeah, I don't care, any capital message he's done in the city, he can happily include in that. I just wanna know where our money's going.
So I'd like to know what's the status of First Street, for that manhole on First Street?
Is that by basic code?
You, you thinking of me or Mr. Kinsale?
Kinsel, I've been asking the same question three months in a row.
Manhole. That's the one you.
That St. Cole on First Street?
You said St. Cole, not manhole.
On First, that St. Cole on First Street, it reminds me of the same question, what is the status on that St. Cole?
Yeah, we went out there, that's actually, I have to follow up, I met DOT out there, it's actually a storm drain. I talked to, we think it's a storm drain, and I talked to Treasure and I think Leslie about, they met me out there and I'll follow up with them tomorrow and see what their plans are, but they were going, first they were talking about just putting dirt in it. But I mean, I think that's not gonna work, I mean, if it's a hole, there's just dirt, it's just gonna go in there again, so. I'll check with them and see what they've done as far as trying to get a timeframe to fix it.
I'll also add to your list, Hardee's. Hardee's and Broad Street, that section right there.
You talking about the turning lanes, the big section on, beside Hardee's, right there? You talking about the turning areas?
Yeah.
I talked to Treasure about that the other day when he asked him, I mean, about Walmart. He said he was gonna follow up with, with Leslie or Kevin and see where they were at.
He said you keep pushing behind him, because we know that, we know that, we drop the ball, so we keep pushing. And the fire hydrant on Broad Street is being repaired.
It will be put in Thursday and Friday.
Did you have, there were two, there were two boards that they're in the works eventually or?
Not high, but we gotta remove them, I'm at it, all orange, the Georgia stick.
So there was another, was there any other one that, Charles, that weren't working?
The one they were trying to break, went up on First Church.
Oh, yeah, they, they tried to.
Hey Freddie, I believe it's Second Street, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a big old pile of dirt in the middle of that road and some houses you can't get to right now.
Oh. They come in, they, that's the same thing, they're rocking it too, trying to get it repaired, that's where they did replace the sewer down Second Street.
Okay, why is it, I was there two weeks ago, maybe a week ago, and you can't drive down that road?
That section, they have to come in and out and ends, they get people in and out, but they scattered rock now, most of them.
Okay, but are we not gonna put it back in rock so that they can travel on that road until we get it fixed?
They're trying to, but they're bogging down.
Okay, it's just too salt.
It's just too wet, air lines are bogging in.
Okay, yeah, I went through there, my car was like on a dirt road.
It's set up to be paved, but it's just, it's same situation, it's just too wet.
Okay.
So Alex, on Brunson Street, did you ever get back with the guy for DOT about Brunson Street?
I talked to him about that, because I met Treasure out there a month, month and a half ago. He said he was gonna put in a work order on it and I asked him the other day and there again, he said he was gonna check and see where it was at with the work order, you know, in the work order system. His, his thing to me is, is they're twenty-five people short and they've got hundreds of work orders and they have to prioritize them, but, I mean, you gotta hold somebody that can fall in and get hurt. To me, that should be, and it's not gonna be a hard fix.
What's his territory he's over?
Sir?
What territory is he over?
He's over, he's the resident guy for Darlington County, he took.
Yes, Darlington County?
Yeah, he took.
Roy Barnell.
Yeah, Roy Barnell's guy.
And what's the status on that study on Farm Street?
They're working on, they're getting addresses, getting ready to do salaries for them, or incomes for them.
What?
Their PD council, pod has to do income survey.
No, there was a study y'all said started four months ago.
On Farm, they're working on, that's, that's for the grant.
I know that, I'm asking you what is, that's the kind of, it's just, all you think.
She's getting ready to do income survey.
We're also, they are also doing the needs assessment, public hearing on February twelfth at two o'clock at the city administration building. So they are accepting comments on the needs assessment that they've done, the work they've been doing the last four months.
What, which administration building?
Where Howard's office, the officer at.
What do they, what do they mean?
That is at two o'clock next Friday.
Chief Washington, I think you showed us a picture you got of the SUV, three C one or?
Yes, sir, it's actually three. That was the grant that we received from USDA that, that you all supported. And again, we, on behalf of the police, police department and our staff, we thank you guys for your support.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
I'd like to commend you, seal all the officers stopping people from driving past twenty-five miles an hour speed zone or school zone and taking care of business over there.
Yes, sir.
Take care of our children over there. All right, any other, other comments? More council comments, do we have any council comments?
I have a motion. My comment is I have, make a motion to adjourn, there apparently being no other council comments.
I'd like to object, I've been, I'm sorry, but I'd like to object, I've been staying a hundred and six months by myself, I'm enjoying some company.
Say the motion.
Before we adjourn, the reminders are Tuesday, March the second, twenty twenty-one monthly meeting, the Darlington City Council at six thirty. And also the reminder of the Chamber of Commerce meeting Thursday night at five thirty, everybody's invited to that also. All right, is I in motion to adjourn? Is I agreed? Thank you, everyone, right now.